Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Wilmer City Council. It's called to order in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act on Tuesday, March, uh, today's Thursday, I'm sorry. Thursday, September 6th. Y'all please forgive me tonight. March 6th, 2025 at 7:01. Chief Kemp, could you do invocation of ours, please? Everyone rise.
Mayor, if I may, as we stand for the invocation, Mayor Pro Tim and Honorable Counsel, I'm sure all of you know this week that our Honorable Mayor lost her husband, Frank, earlier in the week. So I would just ask, at this point of the invocation, that we'd also, throughout this, keep our mayor in your prayers for comfort and peace. Heavenly Father, we love you and we honor you first and foremost this evening. We thank you for your mercy, your love, your kindness, compassion on us. We take a moment tonight, Heavenly Father, to ask you to give our mayor comfort and peace that only you can give and provide as she walks through the next days and weeks and months, rides the roller coaster of emotions and grief. We know that you'll be by her side. You will strengthen her, give her the supernatural strength to get through this and be there for her family, as our family is there for her as well. Heavenly Father, we thank you for each one of our mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and counsel tonight. We honor them and ask you to bless them, prosper them, protect them and to give them wisdom from on high to be able to continue to conduct the businesses and affairs of this community so this community is blessed in such a way that it's a blessing to surrounding communities and our citizens are blessed and protected. And we ask these things tonight in your precious Son's name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Jacobs will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, citizens who have pre-registered before the call of order will be allowed to speak on any matter other than personal matters or matters under litigation for the length of time to not exceed three minutes. No council action or discussion may take place on a matter until such matter has been placed on the agenda, a posting in accordance with the law. Anyone desiring to speak on an item scheduled for the public hearing is required to hold their comments until the public hearing portion of the item. City Secretary, Ms. Quinn, did anyone sign up?
Yes, Mayor. Maria Jackson.
Ms. Jackson, please come forward. Please state your name, your address.
Maria Jackson, 307 North Dallas Avenue, Wilmer, 75172. My concerns was the trips. Two trips for the whole city council to go to Vegas and Washington DC in one year, that was, to me, extreme, which is something that we could have used, that money could have been used to do something here in this city, this town that needed it, instead of Vegas and Washington DC. Washington DC doesn't look, think about us as a big city, is just a dot on the map. With 4,000 people or less, that's all it is. I'm sure they could hear me.
Thank you.
That's it. I'm done. The faster I sell my house and the faster I can get out of here, I'm good.
Anyone else? Items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and are generally enacted in one motion. The, I'm sorry, the, the exception to the rule is that a council member may request one or more item be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Ms. Quinn?
Thank you. Item number one, consider approval of minutes from the City Council, regular December 19, 2024 City Council meeting. Item two, consider approval from the City Council, regular January 16, 2025 City Council
Council members, do you have any questions or wish to pull any items from the consent Counsel, may I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the City Council regular meeting, December 19, 2024, and our second is consider the minutes for the City Council of January 16,
May I get a second, please?
Second, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Please state your vote aloud, please.
Yes.
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 That's five to zero. Ms. Quinn?
Under public hearing, we have, let's see, we have two listed, and I don't know if I can read both of them into the record. Number four, or I'm sorry, number three, conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance 2025-0301A to rezone one tract of land totaling 6.222 acres from the restricted commercial C1 to general commercial C2 zoning district. The subject property is generally located on the east side of Interstate 45 north of Beltline Road. The property is more fully described as being situated in the A Warfield survey abstract number 1612, City of Wilmer, Dallas County, Texas, being a portion of a tract conveyed to RP Diverse Properties LP by deed recorded in instrument number 201100317793 of the official public records, Dallas County, Texas, and tracks three conveyed to the AAA Oil Company Incorporated, recorded in volume 2003148, page 7680 of the deed records, Dallas County, Texas. Item number four, conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance number 20250301B for a request for conditional use permit to allow truck travel center for a proposed racetrack convenience store with gasoline sales.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council, the subject property for the rezoning request is 6.222 acres and located on the northeast corner of Interstate 45 and Beltline. It's bordered by Knoll Ridge Mobile Home Park to the South Chevron Gas Station and Convenience Store to the east by single-family residence and to the west side Interstate 45. The subject property is partially located within the restricted commercial C1 zoning district and partially within the general commercial C2 zoning district. The subject site falls within the highway commercial overlay district adopted January 18, 2023, and the property is currently vacant and undeveloped. This item is a companion item to the item number four that was read, which is if or should the zoning be considered and approved, that as part of the request, there is a conditional use request to allow for a truck travel center. The purpose of the second request is for the CUP for a truck travel center. The applicant, there was a public hearing that was conducted at the PNC, and the applicant agreed that as part of the CUP, that it would only be allowed for gasoline, fueling for trucking customers, that there will not be any showers, laundry or lodging, that there would not be any overnight parking and trailer storage, and that they would follow the Beltline Overlay District. At the February 27 regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the PNC recommended three to one, that both items would move forward to the City Council, and there was a public hearing that was conducted for both items. These items were noticed in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act. There was a legal notice in the newspaper record, Dallas County Press, a zoning sign was placed on the property, and property owners within 200 feet of the subject property were notified of the public hearing. And with that, staff is asking that the council conduct a public hearing and consider both requests. It should be noted that each item would have to be voted for separately.
Yes.
And two public hearings, and that should the first item pass, then the second item is the companion for that. They are very much intertwined with one another. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present this evening for presentation.
I will open the public hearing at this time. Does any, and it will be at 7:13. Does anyone wish to speak during this public hearing? Go ahead, sir.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you so much for being here, of course, and thank you for hearing our case. For the record, my name is Daniel Box, and I'm a zoning attorney with Winstead PC. Office is located at 2728 North Harwood Street in Dallas. So just by way of introduction, that's who I am. We have also together here with me some other members of our development team, including our traffic engineer, from whom I expect you might be rather eager to hear this evening. Also with us are three members of the racetrack team who flew all the way out here from Atlanta to be with us tonight. They were here with us last Thursday, and they were here with us in December also for the PNC work session. Everybody have to answer any questions that you might have. So before we turn it over and start discussing traffic, which I'm certain will be the focus of our conversation this evening, I just kind of want to hit as briefly as possible some of the high-level points leading up to that. So first, I'd like to kind of showcase our product and some of the enhanced landscaping that we intend to offer. If I just distributed the packet, if you'll turn to pages seven and eight, that'll give you an idea of what I'm referencing. So everybody's familiar with racetrack. Everybody knows our image. We've worked very hard to project our image as kind of the clean and the sharpest-looking gas station around, and I know that I'm not the only person who's ever been on a road trip and thought to myself, gosh, if I can just wait 15 more minutes, I can go to those cleaner bathrooms at Racetrack rather than having to go to this sketchy joint here at the side of the road. So Racetrack really does, worked really hard to project that image, and we think that this location is no exception. We've, we're presenting masonry on the sites of the building there. We have three architecturally prominent façades. We're put on, we put on mansard roof on all of our canopies there. We're providing extra trees above and beyond what's required by the landscaping ordinance. As you can see on page eight, there's a lot of green there. And then if you go from there to pages 15 through 18, you'll get a look at some of the interior photos. This is from an actual store here in town, here in DFW. And you'll also see some of the food offerings there. Of course, we've got breakfast sandwiches and hot dogs, pizza. On top of that, we've got frozen yogurt, and so it's a really nice place to grab a small bite, kind of like a neighborhood market, and sit down and enjoy it with your family and friends, because we've also provided benches at the exterior of the site. So we think it's a really attractive product. The next point that I'll make before we get to traffic is I want to direct your attention to pages 28 through 29. They're the last two pages of the presentation. I know that everybody here on council has a particular mind for the future of this city, and that's very understandable. There are a lot of people with eyes on this city who understand that development is coming, and it's an exciting place to be, and this is a very important intersection for the city of Wilmer. We understand that and we appreciate that. I know that there are big hopes and big plans for this, for this intersection. My argument to you today is that we think that we're actually an attraction for purposes of drawing other businesses to this corner. We think that, I could say that we've been working together with staff. I know that there's a report that's been circulated which shows that we've been cooperating with staff in order to try to bring in other businesses in the vacant land that we intend to leave around the racetrack site. So there will be room for other businesses to come in. Even if you're not persuaded that we are going to be an attraction to other businesses, at the very least, I want to make the point that we are certain and confident that we don't scare other businesses away. So if you look at those two pages, you'll see a real-life example of Racetrack up in the legacy area of Plano, and you can see what the area looked like in 2013 when we first got there versus what it looked like in 2024, and it's quite the margin difference. And so what we intended to show with this exhibit was that we certainly, even if, even if you're going to make the argument that a racetrack might not bring in business, we are confident that we don't scare away good, quality, retail, mixed-use, office kinds of developments. Those things fit in perfectly well with us if the market demands it, and we intend to cooperate and continue to cooperate with the city to try to bring in good businesses around us. That's a benefit to us as well. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and, I want us to get to traffic. I know that's where all the focus of the conversation is going to be, and I'm not really the expert here. We have people here who can answer those questions, but I'll just kind of tee it up before we get to them. I know that there are concerns, really, I perceive them for three different reasons. Number one, because of the way in which the gas stations around us at that intersection are already functioning or operating. I know it's congested. I know it's not, it's not the most attractive product. I know it feels kind of cramped and dangerous, and so it's kind of an unpleasant experience. There's also the surrounding and existing infrastructure. There are the roads, they can feel overtaxed. And then also, we heard the neighbors last time, at PNC last week, we learned about their objection at that time, and we heard them say that they don't want any more gas stations here at this intersection. We hear all of those objections, and we appreciate those objections, but we think that, we think that we can overcome all of them, and I'll, I'll save most of my response for rebuttal, but for now, let me just touch on those briefly. By way of not wanting more gas stations at this corner, I'll say that's not really what we're here tonight to discuss. That use, the gas station use, is allowed under the existing zoning by right, C1 and C2. I will say, as a big disclaimer, of course, the highway corridor is there as an overlay, and all uses in the highway corridor do require a CUP. So as, by just be fully transparent, we wouldn't need to pursue a CUP in any instance, but with regard to the base zoning, the gas station is already allowed. In addition, gas station at this corner is really what the market supports. You don't have to be a market expert to have driven down a highway and to know that basically at any, any major off-ramp, any major intersection with a highway, you're going to see a gas station at that corner. So we think that this is really, and it's not unique to Wilmer. You know, you see that throughout Texas, throughout the United States. Whenever you're on a road trip, you see a gas station there at the off-ramp. So we think that that's what the market supports. We think that it's allowed by the existing zoning, so we don't think that that's really an issue. And with regard to the surrounding roads, we are working very closely with TechDOT to make sure our ingress and ingress is perfectly smooth. There's a, there are going to be, there's talks for the expansion of Beltline, and we are committed to working with TechDOT and are happy to contribute our fair share of the expansion of that road. And of course, there are D cell lanes that are anticipated to go in there, all of which we think are going to make for a smooth experience. I just want to point out, racetrack and a gas station, these are not destination sites. This isn't like a Six Flags, of course, but it's not even like a gas, it's not even like a grocery store, which will have people driving for miles around just to go to that one spot. We're there to pick up any traffic that's already there. And so if the site is feeling, if the area is feeling congested, like there's too much trucks, well, the solution to that is not to limit gas stations, it's actually to have more. And I'll give you a simple example to help you kind of know. I think we all know this kind of intuitively. If we're at a Target or a Home Depot or wherever, and we're in a long line waiting at a cashier, and it's the only one open, we're all grumbling to ourselves, thinking the same thing. Why don't they open up another cashier, and we all get out of here sooner? It works the exact same here. And I, and I get it, I get why the neighbors are here. Nobody gets excited about more gas stations. But if the concern is congestion, I sincerely think that if we're here, I think we're going to make the problem better by giving the existing traffic and existing congestion an off-ramp, a new place to go, and it'll, it'll provide that exhale that you get in a balloon that gets too full of air. You've got to let some air out, and we're here to let some air out. If you compare us to what our neighbors across the highway, how they operate, that 1-9, we are going to be experienced very differently from that 1-9. If you, if I can direct your attention to slide number two, you'll get a feel for what I'm talking about. You could compare our site to the 1-9 site directly across the highway. Not only do we have three acres more of land, which is a substantial amount of acreage, and allows us to do a lot more queuing and a lot, and to provide driveway aisles that are wider and better navigated. Not only does it allow us to do that because we have more space, but if you also look at the orientation of the site, the 1-9 site is kind of goofy. It's shaped like a hook, and so you can't really, you have to dance around the denny's there to get to the site. There's not too much that can happen along that hook that goes behind denny's, and really all of the queuing and the parking and everything, both for trucks and for passenger vehicles, gets clumped together there at the front of the site, and it's visually unappealing, but it also feels dangerous, it feels, it just feels congested. Our site is not going to be experienced that way. We have, all of the travel truck center use is at the rear of the property. It's screened by the building. It's screened by all of this beautiful landscaping, and we have more space. So I, I think that what we're presenting here is markedly different from what exists today. I think it's going to make the situation better. If it doesn't make it better, at the very least, it's not going to make it worse. And like was read into the record by Rona, we have no amenities here that are going to encourage long-term stays by, by truck drivers. We're going to have no showers, no lodging, no laundry, and, and so I think, I think this is the highest and best use of the site. I think we're going to do well for the site. I think we have the potential to bring in business, and for those reasons, I think, I think it's a benefit. I know everybody wants, you know, grocery stores here at this corner. I think that can still happen, God willing, but I'll also say a grocery store would bring in more traffic than we would. So I, you know, hopefully, hopefully there's not too much, or an overdue emphasis on traffic here. I think it's really a question of how do we manage it, and I think that we've put together a plan that does that very nicely. So I will, our traffic engineer is here to answer any questions you might have. Also, members of Racetrack, I think is going to hop up just to kind of say hello and give some introductory remarks, and then we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Please state your name and your address.
My name is, my name is John Paul Hoover. Our address, I'm, we're for Racetrack, the engineering project manager. Our address is 200 Galleria Parkway Southeast, Suite 900, Atlanta, Georgia, 30339. So thank you to council members for your consideration of our application. We're excited at the opportunity to bring a racetrack to Wilmer. It would join the more than 130 existing locations that we have operating in Texas. Excuse me. We've been operating in the state for more than 45 years. We have over 100, like I said, over 130 locations. We employ over 1,700 people in this state at various different levels above the store staff. The store alone would employ 20 to 30 people in the local community. Kind of zooming out on a national level, we have been in business since 1934, so almost 100 years now. We have over 600 racetrack locations and over 200 raceway locations, all under our umbrella, and we are growing faster than ever. And yet, we still remain a family-owned business. So at each location, I think another benefit, in addition to what Daniel was mentioning, we do everything we can to be there for the community. That includes operating as an essential business during disasters. We know you guys had some pretty big storms around here earlier this week, and we're just thankful everything seems to be back up and running. So during situations like this, we have emergency generators all stationed all over the state that can be brought to different sites. We have, excuse me, 200,000 water bottles reserved that can be brought to any site in the state within 12 hours in the event of a disaster. And this disaster or not, we have free coffee available to first responders 24/7. In addition to this, we have seen that in the past few, past couple of years, the average travel center site, which will, this will be one of, can generate over a million dollars in tax revenue for state and local governments every year. So if you'll flip to slide 15, you can see a couple of pictures of one of our newly opened travel centers. That's on Bonneview Road, it's about 15 or 20 minutes away. This one in Wilmer would be similar to that, it'll be slightly smaller, but it gives a good idea of what we're trying to do with the property. So we maintain very, very high standards, as Daniel mentioned, for convenience, cleanliness, and safety. Our site layouts are worked on internally for months in order to ensure that we're providing the most convenient and easy-to-use site as possible. And again, our driveways, if you're worried about congestion into the streets, we have hundreds of feet of driveway on, on both Beltline and the frontage road that can be used for queuing, as I'll touch on that a little bit later as well. So on slide 15, again, those are photos of a new site, Bonneview Road. And then if you flip to slides 16 and 17, you'll see some interior photos of that travel center prototype. So it'll be a spacious, clean store, will always have at least two employees present to make sure that we can provide the highest level of service that we can. And this being a travel center, if anybody here has been to a racetrack before, travel center is going to give you more food and other supplies offerings than you would find at a traditional racetrack. So on slide 18, you see some of our food offerings. So in addition to the pizza and sandwiches and frozen yogurt that you'd find at other locations, you'll also have chicken tenders, wings, fries, and much, much more. And the 24/7 nature of our operation means that if you're a local resident and say it's 2:00 AM and you need batteries, the big department stores are all closed, you can go to a racetrack. If you need any essentials, any time of day, we're here for you. So kind of jumping ahead, slide 19, just want to mention a couple of notes on concerns that came up in the planning and zoning hearing. And Daniel touched on it, the question of overnight parking. We, in our experience, if we put a limitation saying no overnight parking allowed, it's a really vague term, and it can be interpreted in a variety of ways. What we would prefer to do, if the council members prefer to have a time limit on our parking, we can say something like 24-hour limit on parking. That's something that we will commonly do at travel center sites. In that case, every morning shift and often other shifts during the day, employees will walk the site, and if they see a truck parked over 24 hours, or whatever posted limit there is, we have a towing procedure, which if violated for a further 24 hours, if they haven't moved, they will be towed. There's a note on that. Parking is really just intended for travelers to park, if they're going to park at night or during the day, park for a short period of time, get what you need in the store, rest a little bit, and continue on your journey. We're not trying to be a loves, we're not trying to be a We're not trying to be a Loves, we're not trying to be a Pilot, we have no showers, laundry, anything like that. Just park, get what you need, and continue. Another concern that came up was light and noise pollution. We put a lot of effort into mitigating both of these. So lighting, all of our lights are dark sky compliant, so we have reduced the light pollution as much as possible. If you look at our area lights, they all have these like caps on them, we have recessed lighting all over the site, so it really reduces any sort of glare that you would have coming off the site. As far as noise goes, we've had noise studies commissioned in the past. So for a site like this, where it's like right next to an interstate, and you have surrounding properties between, you know, 1,000 to 2,000 feet away, the vast majority of the noise being heard is from the interstate, right now and after we build. We are not going to be adding a significant amount of decibels to where it would even be noticeable. So our goal and what we were, will work to do, especially with the other developments that we want to bring in around our site, if you're living in a residential area surrounding, it's not going to be a noticeable difference from what you're experiencing today in terms of light and noise pollution. And traffic, again, I'll let our engineers answer questions about that a little bit more, just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. So that Bonneview site I was talking about, it recently opened, but it's already a top 10 performing store in our entire fleet across the country. And to, for, to give you kind of a frame of reference, in the peak hour, its busiest hour, it is only fueling 15 trucks in, in that hour. And if you measure out this Wilmer site using truck turn templates, those 15 trucks could stack up and queue inside of our site if there was only one diesel position available. We have seven. So as much as we wish to have enough business to fill up all those seven and queue out into the public right of way, it's not going to happen. There's, there's nothing that could really cause that within reason. So again, bottom line is, there is a demonstrated need for truck fueling and parking here. We are only aiming to give another opportunity, in addition to the 1-9 station, to get trucks off the interstate frontage roads faster, off of Beltline faster, and really just improve traffic flow. There is already not enough truck parking and fueling across the state. TechDOT estimates that the demand for truck parking is going to increase by 70% by the year 2050. So having a site like this can help you kind of future-proof for what TechDOT is predicting to come. And so now I'll, I'll hand it over to our engineers to answer questions about traffic or any other really technical questions. If there's anything that comes up, Race Track specific questions, I'm here as well. Thank you.
Please state your name and your address, sir.
Good evening, David Bond with Spire Engineering, 501 George West Highway in Richardson. Here on behalf of Race Track tonight, we're the civil engineer for them on the site. So we were required by you all and staff to perform a traffic impact analysis of the impact of the Race Track store to the 45 and Beltline intersection. That was done and reviewed by y'all's third-party engineer, looking at level of service, need for D cell lanes, driveway spacing, site distance, all that good stuff at the proposed development. What the study found and what was concurred with is that that intersection operates at what is a level of service C on an A through F grading scale. C is an acceptable level in the city, some cities go to D as far as what they view as acceptable traffic. This intersection currently functions as a C, continues to function as level C after the development. Then to offset the impact of the new development, we are providing a right turn line in at all three of our driveways, in addition to building a left turn in for drives for folks going east on Beltline. So with that, I'll be happy to stand for any questions, as well as anything that y'all may have from my colleagues, but, you know, we would respectfully request your approval of these items and happy to, happy to talk through with you as needed. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, could, sir, could you come back to the podium, please?
Sorry, I thought you were going to call someone else.
I have some questions for you. I want you to look at page 10, page 20, and page 24 of your packet that you prepared for us.
I've got it electronically, so when I'm looking at my phone, I promise it's not a, not anything else. Page, I'm sorry, I wouldn't.
Page 10 and page 24 seem to be similar, where I can tell traffic flow layout of the building of Beltline and 45, Service Road. But then the traffic map that you give us on 20, it's turned, and I'm dyslexic, and I just, I'm just trying to understand that traffic flow, so I'm sending your turning map this way.
Yeah, so page 20, we, we try to confuse everyone by turning it, I'm just kidding about it.
Well, now, well, here's my question. Okay, my main question is, we have 24 homes on Wilmer Heights, which backs up to that property. There are 24 homes directly on that street behind it. And so when I'm looking at page two, I'm sorry to go back and forth on your phone.
That's okay.
Page two, there are, there's a green, yellow, and then there's two other little small yellows. So I'm trying to figure out, for your mapping of your facility, would it be the small rectangles that's yellow? Would it be the larger rectangle that's yellow that would include the parking and the driving within that whole green, that's marked in green as the boundary of the area? So the three questions that I have are, how far back east of your property until we get to Wilmer Heights Road?
It's roughly, so that green is the limit of the Race Track property?
The green would be the limit?
Yes, ma'am.
So, from the green to the, to the back of the people's homes that are on Wilmer Heights, do you happen to know how many feet that is, or how many yards that is?
It's a couple hundred feet.
Just a couple hundred feet?
It's about 225, 250 feet, somewhere in there. Don't have that exact dimension for you.
Because it doesn't look like it would be, it, it looks to be about the same depth as your property that's in green. So the width of your property along Beltline, do you happen to know what that is?
I've got it right here, and I can tell you, we're 3, 355 along Beltline?
So from the Service Road on 45 to the back of your boundaries, 355?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's going to be about 350 feet from your property line to Wilmer Heights?
To the entry into the Race Track. Oh, I'm sorry, to Wilmer Heights, that's right.
Yeah, so it'd be about.
It's about midway of that parcel. The whole parcel there is about 21 acres, and the Race Track is taking six of it, which is highlighted there in green. So it doesn't immediately abut the neighbors to the back there.
I understand that, and I do understand you're going to have trees that can act as sound boundaries, but this would be our first gas station, truck stop, whatever, that would be close to actual residencies with houses and noise. You know, even if they're just driving in that back road pathway according to your one map, they're going to have some, some noise. And there's going to be sounds of the brakes. I'm very concerned about the residents of my town being that close to this facility. There are children, little children that live on that street who go to bed at 8:30 or 9 o'clock, and, you know, you made the comment about parking, you know, normally a trucker will park for three or four hours to get their required time of rest and move on, and they don't have to turn their engines off. It's not a requirement that they turn their engines off, so the motor is running. And I'm just, I'll be honest with you, you know, it's nice, you know, I've been to a Race Track, it's a nice facility. I'm not saying that it's, we, it would not be good for Wilmer. It won't, I don't think it would be good at that spot. And it's because of, not just the, the location of the traffic, I'm more concerned about my people, if I, if you can understand that. And I don't know what you could install, a rock or a brick, some kind of sound barrier, I know that does exist, that I've seen in other places. When I lived in Fort Worth, they had those little walls that were sound that would be almost backing up to houses. So anyway, that's something that maybe you might want to consider for that back, back drive area, to have some kind of a sound area to protect the families that live on that street.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a couple of thoughts to that. You know, my colleague mentioned the sound studies. Not to say you would never hear a truck or that sort of thing, but you do hear, you know, I live about a mile from the Dart, and I hear that at night, you know, a mile away, right? And so I know that these folks hear the highway, you know, the studies have been done to address that. Then, you know, it's, it's, when you've got the residential, I mean, I, I lived it, I lived back up to a non-residential development, you know, there's rules and things that the parent tract will have to abide by, you know? We mentioned, everything has to have a CUP, I'm sorry, come before you for a CUP in this area, regardless of use. And so hopefully, after the Race Track comes, the, the big anchor, whoever that might be, that's immediately adjacent, they'll have a chance to put up, you know, some buffering and some, some shrubbery, you know? Personally, I like a living screen there, you know, you plant something, it gets taller eventually. And so, you know, I think, you know, for our development, to, to put up a wall, you know, it works, or, you know, sound more, something to that effect may work against the, you know, the catalyst that we hope to see with a site coming in, hopefully spurring adjacent folks on to come in and develop, so.
We just have a, a truck repair place in town, and that occasionally they will have one, maybe two trucks, and the residents that live nearby there, it's just a lot of complaints on noise just on those one or two trucks. And I know you're going to have more than one or two trucks. And so, anyway, I just wanted to know what was the, it's 350 feet.
Yeah, the, that's, that's our depth, and the, the, one with all the colors that you were mentioning, the intent there was to show when a truck's coming from any direction that they can maneuver the site pretty easily. So the, the color coding is to show you, so you can track a vehicle coming through, but it's rotated to fit on the page a little bit better, so.
Yeah, I could understand it if I turned the paper sideways.
That's right.
Thank you for your time. That was my only wish, my only questions and concerns why they were different.
Thank you.
Willis, pull your mic down, please. No, just pull your mic down.
Okay, I got it. My question is basically the same as hers. I believe I made a note here that wouldn't be over nine trucks parked at one time, seven or nine?
There's seven fueling positions for trucks, all at once, yes, ma'am.
Fueling positions, but there's truck, parking area for the trucks.
There'd be a place to, once you fuel, to pull forward, if you're just going in for a minute, you could just pull forward and leave. Then there's a handful of spaces as well.
How many spaces?
Is it, eight, I think it's about 18. I'm going to check, but yeah, there's.
I have, I have the same problem with these trucks. They, truck driver, you know, he's got to take breaks, keep up with his log books and all this stuff, eight hours or something. But normally, like she was saying, they don't turn, or one of you was saying, they don't turn the trucks off, you know, the air conditioning, the trucks are constantly running. And there'd be a problem with that. Plus the traffic, Beltline Road going under that bridge, trying to make turns, getting on the Service Road now is pitiful. You know, they're, they're up on the medians and everything else, you know, you're pulling a, a big load behind you, and you swing out, and they're just, you know, tearing up the road stay tour up with that. But those are, that's my two complaints right there on this, is the, I, personally, I would love to see a grocery store and a shopping center go in there, be my preference, so. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
I have nothing against truck stops, except I had a brother-in-law, and he drove trucks. He told me that he'd never turned his truck off. He couldn't, because he lived in that truck. And I know what you're going to get there, they're going to do the same thing. And like Ms. Jacob said, I'm concerned about my citizens and their health, because that puts off pollution. And I think all of you know that.
I do have one comment, and it's not directly to Race Track, but until we can collectively get something done with Beltline Road, no matter what business it is, we're going to have difficulty. I think we need to collectively bombard the powers that be to fix our main road.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I, I've heard what you said, and, you know, I, I think we've done our best to address it. Perhaps, at this point, I, I would just add, you know, I'm, I'm a layman, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, and, you know, so I, I hear truck stop, and, and like you, I kind of think, well, I'm assuming that's going to make a whole bunch of noise. What, what I understand based on the studies that we have done, and based on the studies of our existing sites, having observed how they operate, having conducted studies there in person, is that really the overwhelming majority, and I'm talking about more than 98% of the noise that's generated from the site, is actually generated from the highway. So I understand, you're absolutely right. The trucks are going to come, they're going to park, nobody wants to turn off their AC, and it's my understanding that under Texas law, you can't even require them to turn it off precisely because of that reason. So we have plenty of Race Tracks at other states where we do require, we do post signs, we do police, we make sure that there's no idling. Unfortunately, in the state of Texas, there's only so much that we can do. So I, I'm in a position where I, I believe our studies, I believe our observed data, I don't think that we're going to make the noise impact that I, I understand there is a fear that there is going to be, particularly once we, God willing, attract some additional businesses around us, and let's say in the future, we have like a big, we have a big grocery store or something behind us, I think that will also do a lot to mitigate some of the noise that might be heard from the neighbors around us. So I, I, I'm sympathetic, and I, I think we have a lot of the same goals here. We want to see Beltline improved. I don't know that anything is going to function well until Beltline is, is really made what it needs to be here at this site. And I think we're, I could tell you, we're committed to coming in and doing precisely that. But if, if y'all are in a place where you're not comfortable with it, or you would like to see more data, we're happy to, to go and do a noise study here at this site, to do more noise studies and actually submit them for your consideration before, before we proceed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at your drawing on page 24, and, you know, I know that plans sometimes change, but you have 25 slots for semi-trucks there, which is one more than the number of houses on that street. So, you know, I would, I'd be very interested to think about if there are 25 trucks parked right there, even, you know, where I live, I'm three blocks away from the highway, I do hear noise from the highway occasionally, and I'm sure my, my, the residents that live on that street hear highway noise, but this would be constant, where the highway noise is not constant. It's mainly with, just when traffic is. And so I would like to, you know, if this is to continue, to have some kind of study about noise, because there are some young children that live on that street, and pollution and noise would be a major concern for me for this project to move forward. Not if... Not, not, and the traffic is also, but the pollution and noise is my, would be my main concern.
I think that's completely fair. I have four kids myself, so I completely get it and they have early bedtime, so. I, I, I'm sympathetic to what you're saying and I don't think I'm going to win you over this evening. So we, we are happy to go back to the, take a look at some of these, take a look at some of these studies and I, I'm, I trust that we'll be able to get you what you're looking for.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to make a quick note, this was, so, I was trying to find the right Texas administrative code about idling. I told Daniel the incorrect information, so I apologize. So this is Texas Administrative Code Title Thirty, Rule One Fourteen Point Five One Two, that you cannot cause, suffer, allow, or permit the primary propulsion engine of a motor to idle for more than five consecutive minutes when it's not in motion. So, in this case, we will do what we do at many of our travel centers where we, we can have a sign up that says no idling. And so we're, we will just follow whatever the administrative code, we prefer they don't allow that. I mean, I defer to whatever the, you guys know it better than I do, but this was what I had found on the Texas Administrative Code website. Cannot idle more than five minutes. So just, just to clarify that, we can't, we will put up no idling signs for something that we will actively discourage.
Any other questions? If not, I will now close. Yeah, I know, I know, I'm sorry. Now, is there any members of the audience that would like to speak? Please state your name and address and you'll have thirty minutes.
Okay. Diana Rusan, three oh six, Wilmer Heights Drive, Wilmer, Texas, seven five, one seven two. I thank you four for looking out for Wilmer High Street, because true enough, we do hear traffic from the freeway, but at a certain time, it's not as hectic like it will be with, if we have this racetrack. You know, I do, you know, appreciate that y'all aren't considering of us and that street. And like she said, there's elderly persons and there's children running around, so we do, we're not trying to stop something to build there, but we just need something different for the city, for the community, you know? And them bashing one-nine, one-nine, don't have no housing around them, Exxon's don't have no housing around them, Chevron don't have no housing around them, so whatever goes on there at a certain time, it, it stops. Exxon closes at twelve, Chevron closes at twelve, Shell's is the only one open twenty-four hours. But there's no housing around there. And this location, what they're trying to do is going to affect us, you know, sleeping at night, you know, and we're hearing those trucks, you know? So, I do appreciate y'all looking out, trying to look out for the city, the Wilmer High Street. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Please state your name, your address.
Candy Madrigal, two oh five Summer Street. I had really hoped that we were going to use this corner for more, like a sit-down restaurant. We have so many places that need somewhere to eat and thank goodness, Zach has all the different restaurants there and then we have the Burger King and then, you know, further down, but we really need more restaurants to sit down and eat at and more restaurants to accommodate all the people who work around here. I'm not opposed to racetrack and, and all that they have to bring, but I really think that corner would serve better in a retail type with restaurants. So, that, that was my only thought, and by the way, twenty-four hours would take you overnight, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address, please.
Mary Perez, two two four, Wilmer Heights Drive. My theme is, okay, I don't have nothing against racetrack neither, okay? That location, let's get something a little bit better than that. Racetrack, Pleasant Run, we got all the truck traffic over there, think about that, or Sunrise. We got the new loop, you know? The, let's expand some of this traffic out of Beltline. Why we're trying to get everything on Beltline, it doesn't make sense to me, you know? Let's eliminate some of this traffic, I need to figure out where to pull all this traffic to, you know? So, I mean, I'm really not against the, somewhere else, I'm just against there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Jose Ramirez, three oh eight East Beltline, Wilmer, Texas. I want to start by thanking the police, Wilmer Police, by doing a great job fighting these trucks, not following the rules on Beltline. That's what we're fighting, right? The trucks on Beltline. Racetrack, want to bring more trucks to Beltline. Now, the other side, okay? I oppose to that, not just because of the trucks, is because they're not bringing anything new to Wilmer. They say they bring in chicken, wings, pizza, ice cream, we already have that. And much better chicken than churches, tell you that, than what they offering. That spot right there is not going to serve us, it's going to serve us for something else, not for a gas, gas station. We already have three gas stations. We don't need trucks there running. You guys know we have the weigh station over there where the state troopers normally do their checks. That's going to be the perfect hiding spot for truckers that not follow the rules. They're going to park there until that light turns off, so they can drive and pass that weigh station. That's what's going to happen. You drive when the weigh station is open and you see all these truckers that do not follow the rules, park on the shoulder, park on the service road, park over here by Chevron, waiting for the cops to leave over there. That's going to be the perfect hiding spot for all these bad truck drivers. They say they're going to have at least two people managing that big truck center. You imagine an employee going to the window of the truck driver that is sleeping and saying, hey, your time is up, you need to go. That truck driver is going to be stressed, is going to react bad. And what's going to happen? They're going to call the police to kick that bad driver, that bad driver out. Our police have better things to do. The policing truck drivers did not leave when they saying, we don't need that. Just the other day, two trucks under the path, or the overpass, I was waiting for my light, they were there. I had to wait another three minutes because they were blocking the underpass for me to go in there. But just thinking about it, that's going to be the perfect hiding spot for the bad truck drivers that not want to go and pass the weigh station. We don't want that, and especially the noise and the pollution and everything else. And Exxon and Shell, they do have clean restrooms. I've been there so many times, they do. And I love the chicken better than churches. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Mariel Faminas, I reside at three oh eight East Beltline. I want to oppose to this, I don't, I agree with everybody else, we don't need more gas stations. That spot would, I don't know, it would serve for something a lot better than what, we need something else besides gas stations than warehouses. And I know you as, you know, city council members, and I know you could do better for us citizens. You know, we depend on you guys for everything and I just want to ask, please don't allow another gas station to be built there. We already have plenty of trucks coming by and like I mentioned on the other meeting, right now, they, they go through, you know, they stop and they go through and, you know, traffic may, it may be slow, but, you know, having a gas station there, now they're going to stop and they're going to slow down to pull in there, which is going to cost more traffic. So I know they mentioned before, it's going to alleviate the traffic, it's not. So, I, I ask you, city council, please don't allow this, bring something else that we need, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Zach Kason, sixty-ten Lakehurst. The only thing, nobody mentioned that we're going to start construction across the street Chevron with Taco Casa, as everybody wants here, they want Taco Casa. But what really my concern about, and I've been working on so hard, that we need more rooftops. We need apartments, we need houses, for the supermarket to come. I've been talking to few supermarkets and everybody tell me the same thing. The rooftop is not enough, you need more rooftop, more houses, more apartments. And also, we need more sit-down restaurants. I've been talking to Applebee's, we're negotiating with them, I'm talking to McDonald's. Yeah, I'm talking O'Reilly. So, I also on the top of that, if that happened, I have a plan that to put a street in the middle of my property, that's going to go from town to the service road. So, I, I'm really, my concern right now, it just, we need more rooftops, more shopping center, more houses, that's what we really need. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
Roger Anderson, three oh one, First Street. I was a truck driver over twenty years. When it's twenty degrees, thirty degrees in the morning, they're going to idle their trucks and no cop is going to come out there and tell them to turn off their engine. It's not going to happen, they, they can make a law, but nobody's going to enforce it. So that's dead. And the idea of putting a service station there makes no sense to me. You're routing all the trucks south around Sunrise and bringing them out, I believe, close to Ferris. And that's where you need to build a truck stop. Truck stops for this area, this amount of traffic, you need a big truck stop. And, um, in Terrell, there's a truck stop and it has eight hundred truck, truck spaces. I mean, sixteen truck spaces for the hundreds of trucks that go through a day is nothing. And they're, they're going to crowd it and they're going to park in space that they're not supposed to park because they got nowhere to go and there will be some people evading scales. It, it makes, from my point of view, no sense to build any kind of truck facility in that area just because there's no truck traffic going to be going there. The truck traffic is going to be going around the town, it's being routed that way, that's the way it's designed. Makes no sense to me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
Well then, thank you for hearing us out. I understand there's a lot of concern, I would say even some speculation about what's going to happen at this property, what it would mean for the city if we were to come in and get located and, and be located at this property. So, I, I think really the only solution to know one way or another for certain is to actually do a study, to actually take a look at, at what this would mean by way of noise, by way of traffic, instead of just kind of guessing or speculating. For example, I, you know, I, I would be tempted to think, you know, a grocery store might make less noise than a use like this, but I don't know, you think about it and places like Walmart allow truck parking overnight in their parking lots. So I, I would assume that perhaps even a grocery store could be a noise concern and a light concern and a traffic concern at this location, but, but that's just my assumption. So instead, I would, I would prefer, if we go ahead and, I, I would like to ask if we could postpone this matter so that we can go ahead and do a noise study and a traffic study, a light study. We'd also like to look into the possibility of maybe revising the landscape plan so we can see what we could do by way of an additional buffer between us and, and additional, the neighbors to our east and to our north. So, humbly request to postpone this item.
Thank you, sir. I will be closing the.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you both. And it will be closed at eight oh five. Please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, it is five to zero.
So, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, so what I would, based upon what Mr. Box just said, so if the council, I mean, they can, you can vote on it right now if you want to. You know, yea or nay on it, it's over and done and, you know, they can come back. If you want to honor the request of Mr. Box, you can just take no action and we can bring it up at a time in the future. If they go and get the studies done and answer these questions and have something else new they want to present to council, then it can be back on the agenda. If that is the route the council takes, and that route I'm referring to is the one where you take no action, I would also encourage the public hearing on the CUP to happen. It's obviously can't be voted on by council because you're not doing this one. However, if in the future, if the council decides that they want to bring it back, we do not have to pay for the cost nor go through the hassle of posting a notice and having another public hearing. It doesn't mean you ever have to revisit this again, but I want to leave the options open to council. If you do, then we don't have to worry about having a public hearing on whether or not, on the issue of the CUP. So, if you don't take any action on this one, absolutely fine, if you do take action on this, that's fine as well. Now, depending on the action you take on this item about the C-two zoning, it may just no and void anything after that. But if you decide to honor Mr. Box's request and maybe possibly deal with it again in the future, I would also go ahead and have the public hearing for the CUP. So staff and the city and the citizens are safe money in the hassle reposting and bringing it back.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I suggest calling the vote?
Yes, sir. May I get a motion?
What's the vote for?
Mayor, I move to deny the ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh three oh one.
One second.
Please cast your vote verbally.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
It's five to zero, it cancels, it passes. Okay. So, should we go ahead and do the?
No, there's no reason to do four, yeah, we want five.
Then we're through. Thank you. Mrs. Nora.
Mayor, item five, under public hearing, conduct the public hearing and consider resolution number R two zero two five dash zero three zero six A, approving a letter of no objection to the twelve point eight two two acre property described as Torrington, Wilmer, LP, generally located on the east Beltline, approximately five hundred and twenty-five feet west of Copart.
Thank you. Steph.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
I'm sorry, we're, we're, I'm, does he, did we, did we close the public hearing on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Last time, last time, okay, so we, we actually don't have to have a public hearing again? Yeah, yeah, since we already did that, just revisit it. We can if you want to, it's all up to y'all, but I just didn't want y'all to think you had to.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members, city staff. My name is Karsten Lowe and I'm Affordable Housing Development Manager at JPI located at nine thousand and one Cypress Waters Boulevard, Dallas, Texas. And today before you, we're discussing the Torrington Wilmer project. As you'll see on the first slide, we've been before you before, discussing this a number of times. And tonight, we wanted to ask for you to take action, to take a vote, to hopefully vote to approve, to support our development. If you go to the next slide, on to slide three, over the course of these several meetings, we've heard several concerns about the development, we've heard some feedback about some of the challenges that maybe y'all have experienced with other apartment developments. And so we want to take a moment here to address those directly. The first one is. The first one is that the city of Wilmer does not want another poorly run apartment complex. And to that, I would say, you know, we've spent a lot of time about talking who we are and so I'm not gonna belabor that point, but I will say that we do hire the best-in-class property management company. In this instance, we're proposing to use RPM who we use across our entire portfolio. And we will own this property, if approved, for fifteen years. And we pride ourselves in our, a well-run property and this property will be no different. In other words, we stand by who, behind who we say we are and we want to do the right thing by the city of Wilmer. We want to be sure that the property is well-maintained and so that was the next piece of feedback we received. Apartment complexes are not well-maintained and cost trash and littering. And to that, I would say, we would ensure that we have adequate property maintenance staff and dumpsters throughout the development to ensure the property is well-maintained and not causing additional littering. And to that standpoint, again, we've heard feedback about other developments and how other developments are run, but what I can say is competition is a good thing. Competition across apartment complexes can cause other developments to also uphold standards and so I would ask that you consider that here tonight. And the last one here was that there's a fear that the residents will not be background-checked and cause additional issues. And to that, we would say, our residents must undergo background checks on all of our properties. Should a problem arise or residents violate the terms of the lease agreement, the team is prepared to give notice and address any issues that arise swiftly. Furthermore, the property will have gated access, it will have twenty-four hour surveillance and digital key fobs to ensure access is restricted to the households and temporary guests. And again, the guests will also have to check in via that digital system as well. So, these properties are gonna be well-maintained, well-run, and we're gonna ensure that there's high level of security and a high standard of health for this property. If you go to the next page, we've also addressed a couple times of the idea of this property as a part of the broader context. The context that accounts for a portion of the larger sixty-nine acre site, so again, we're only proposing to develop only twelve of those set acres. But this overall development will bring a lot of the things the residents here tonight have asked for. More homes, large lot homes for executive-type housing, different spaces for additional job creation through industrial and office flex space. And yes, of course, anchor retail or different types of retail for restaurants that will hopefully pave the way for a future hotel and as all this plays together, ideally in the future a grocery store. So, tonight we also hope that you see that our development will actually serve as a catalyst in a lot of ways. As Wilmer continues to grow, as the city continues to change, we want to play a small role in helping build that out, build out infrastructure. As a part of developing this site, we'll extend sewer, we'll extend the, the curb cuts and access, all of which will enable that future retail to come in there. Today, it's challenging to do because you have to build out those detention ponds, those cost money. You have to build out sewer extensions, you have to do all these things to make the site feasible for future development. And so, our development would pave the way for a lot of these other developments to ultimately come in there. And if you go to the next slide, again, we just want to show one of our properties, a handful of you were, had the opportunity to tour, but what I can say is that it's quality. What we're presenting here is the exact same thing we're proposing to build for the city of Wilmer. You can see those quality spaces, those community rooms, places for people to live, congregate and call home. And so, our hope for Torrington Wilmer is that it does the same. On the next page, you'll see the unit finishes. Granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, again, something we would all be happy to call home. So, again, I don't want to go too long tonight and value your all time, but our hope is that you recognize Torrington Wilmer can positively impact and strategically shape the growth and future development in the city of Wilmer, including single-family housing and retail development. We ask that you recognize not all developers are the same. And we hope that when we leave here today, regardless of the result, that there's still opportunities for JPI to help build Wilmer and help play a small role in that. Today, we ask that you vote to approve the resolution of no objection for Torrington Wilmer. And what I will say is that this is going to be our last attempt coming before you, before we have to look to reevaluate. And so, we're asking that you carefully consider everything we've laid out over these past four council sessions to see that maybe this is a positive impact and can help play a pivotal role in the growth of Wilmer. And our commitment to you, should you approve the deal, that we would continue to work with you all throughout the permitting and plan approval process, to work with you on your feedback, to be long-term stakeholders in the community, to hear your concerns and bake that into the plans and processes that we have in place. We want this property to help play a vital role in the future growth and development of the city of Wilmer. So, with that said, that's the end of my presentation, but would be love, would love to answer any questions y'all may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you, thank you. Okay, counsel. I will open the public hearing at eight sixteen. Does anyone want, wish to speak during the public hearing?
Diane Anderson, three oh six Wilmer Heights Drive, Wilmer, Texas. Well, I think it might be a good idea to have housing to start if we, it's gonna help us to get more like a grocery store, not a big fancy grocery store, but like Mr. Zach said, we do need more housing, we do need more apartments, more citizens to grow our population. So, I don't see why not, you know? It could help to try to get a senior citizens and stuff for, you know, help our, our community grow, you know, to, so we can finally get a grocery store. I've been in Wilmer twenty-five years plus, so I've been waiting on this grocery store so I don't have to travel to Pleasant Grove, I don't have to travel to Lancaster, Siegelville, Annie's, I don't care, it's just something that sells some food for us. It don't have to be big, but I, I think it'd be a good idea.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and your address.
Yeah, Zach Ace, sixty-ten acres. I also, nobody mentioned that at the front of this property, you all know that you back a hundred feet to the back. And you all know that at the front we have room for retail like supermarket and shopping center. I just want to mention that.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and your address.
Mary Perez, two two four Wilmer Heights Drive. I don't know if I'm opposed or, or agree to this, okay? Because what I'm looking at is here we are talking about this traffic, okay, on Beltline. We got these new houses that are coming in, I think about three hundred houses. Then we have all these new apartments they want to put in, three hundred apartments. You're looking at about six hundred more cars on Beltline. Are we really ready for all that again? Let's fix this traffic first before we do anything on Beltline. Beltline is really bad, please, okay?
Would anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Fanny Vez Ramires, I reside at three oh eight East Beltline Road. I might have to oppose just, just because we're, we're not ready to receive any more, you know, homes in this city because we don't even have what we actually need. So, and like Mary stated, you know, that's just gonna add to the traffic. So, maybe bring something, you know, for the kids to actually offer. Yes, I know, they mentioned they're gonna offer their residents something, gym, probably like a, I see a playroom in there. So, but what about all the other residents? What about everybody else? We don't have anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to stand up and speak?
The only other thing I'd like to add, and again, just, just for reference, is currently this property is currently zoned. And so, it already permits multifamily. And so, I think the question I would pose just to this room in general is, who do you want to build multifamily? If by right it's zoned, if any developer could come in here and build any type of product, right, they still have to go through the permitting process, but they could conceivably come in and just build multifamily tomorrow without a standard. And so, I would just pose to you that if it is by right for multifamily zoning, we ask that you would see JPI as the best fit for the site and would make the best use of helping develop the city of Wilmer. And the only other thing I would mention is as a part of the master plan development, there are roads that are interconnected through the site, so there are opportunities that you could tie the roads and create access points for the, our development and even people to, you know, cut through the retail area and drive through the roads to have another outlet valve. That way, not all that traffic is being forced to Beltline. So, I pose that as an opportunity, not saying that that's necessarily the case, but I would just like to say that that is an opportunity we can also discuss through this development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address, please.
Candy Madrigal, two oh five Summer Street. I'm generally opposed to apartments, but if it's a gated community and they have higher standards and they do have security, I mean, that's a, that's a really big step up. I, I could see it either way, but we do need some higher-end living for some of the people who work here and want to be here because we do have to get some housing going. So, if it's a gated community and the streets, as he says, will connect and divert some of the traffic, I can't see a problem with it. And then maybe with that, we could get some sit-down restaurants on the other corner. That, that's all, all I want to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Jose Ramires, three oh eight East Beltline Road. I just want to know what the city is gonna do when we have more people in town because bringing these many people, it requires the city to have parks. For me, that's what the people is looking for, not just to drive from work to home and stay there all day, all night. People wants to go out, people wants to go to park, community center. So, you might, you might guys want to think about it, bringing more housing and people to Wilmer. If you guys are ready to receive all these people, all these new people coming to town, if the roads are ready. I know we have a park over here on the side and a little one over here and that's it. We don't have nothing else for the kiddos, not a community center. So, bringing all these people is gonna be a challenge for the city. I just want to know if you guys are ready for this challenge. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
And if I might address that gentleman's comment, you know, one of the things we see, we develop across the metroplex is oftentimes we see park fees as a part of your development to help invest in the community. And so, I think one thing we would be committed to working with you all on is if this development goes forward, is trying to find ways to implement fees as a portion of the development, you know, you have to pay your impact fees, your city fees, but ha, helping the city of Wilmer develop a system in which they can raise dollars for the investment in future parks. Our site itself doesn't have the space to do a park, but dollars from the development could actually go to help with the betterment of Wilmer and create public spaces for people to live, take their kids and play.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and your address, sir.
I'm George Leverett, twenty-four Meadow Lane here in Wilmer. We all want a grocery store which requires growth. It requires house tops, which each single apartment is considered a separate house top. It requires an average income level per home for the majors to consider us and consider developing here. This is a way where we can get house tops here in a quicker fashion so that we can quicker get the attention and grocery stores developed. It is a much higher standard apartment complex from what I've seen that's coming in. They have a higher standard amongst not only their construction, development, quality of life within the community itself, but it also attracts additional, a higher income level as well to raise the average income or the, the average income here within the city. It appears to me to be a win-win situation. Are we gonna have to go through some inconvenience with the traffic? We're gonna have to do that with anything that we grow here in Wilmer, whether it's a grocery store on Beltline and forty-five, whether it's a new, uh, single-family home development, whether it's apartment complex, the growth is going, that we desire and that we're asking for as citizens, the growth that we're asking for is going to create stresses for us for a, a period of time. You can't have one without the other. If you don't want the additional stresses, then you're not wanting to get the growth that goes along with it. If you go on, if you want the growth, you're gonna have the stressors that are going to go along with it. We have a city council in place that works in advance. They look forward to what we need to accommodate the citizens here in Wilmer. We're looking for the growth, we're looking for the infrastructure, but it does not happen overnight. Anybody that has anything to do with government knows that government does not move quickly, that development does not happen overnight. It takes time. But what we're seeing here is that it is taking place. It is moving forward. It is, you guys are moving in the right direction by bringing the development, by bringing the house tops that we need so that Wilmer be, ends up being a destination point, someplace where we enjoy coming home, not only living, but, uh, living life as well and with entertainment. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak? If not, I will... Counsel, do you want to...
Move to close the public hearing, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I am closing. Please vote verbally.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, five to zero. It passes. Okay. Now, I will be closing the public hearing portion and it is eight twenty-eight. Council members, do you have any questions or want to discuss the other item any further? If not...
We have a question.
Yes.
Can I ask the planner a question? Could I have the planner come to the podium?
They've not worked on this.
Oh, they have not worked on this?
No, no.
Okay, then never mind.
Okay. Okay, counsel. May I get a motion? Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve the project.
Thank you, Jeff.
One second.
Thank you, sir, Jeff. Okay. May...
Vote.
Please state your vote verbally.
No. No.
Yes.
No. Yes.
It's two to zero. It fails. It fails.
Against.
Okay. Ms. Suzie.
Now you're back on the script.
Yes, ma'am.
Discuss and consider Resolution Number 2025-0306B, approving an amendment to an agreement with CDM Concrete Contracting for concrete repairs on Beltline utilizing the Interlocal Purchasing System Contract Number 23060202 administered through TIPS in an amount not to exceed $193,508.9.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Members of Council, this is, like you said, admitting the agreement with CDM Contract. The contract removed the existing concrete pavement and performed compaction of the subgrade prior to installation of the new concrete. It was discovered that the panels adjacent to the concrete were cracked and messed up, so there was no point in connecting the fresh new concrete to the older concrete. It would not hold up. As we discussed in the last council meeting, there was a chance that they could increase in pricing with the extra stuff. You know, the conditions were unknown when we first brought it to council, what the concrete underneath the surface was. Like I said, that's where the additional costs come from, and then the cost of additional materials and coat for the concrete. And staff recommends approval. If you have any questions, I can answer it.
Council, do you have any questions?
I thought we just paid a bill on concrete. Is this a different, separate bill? I can barely hear him out there.
So this item came before you and it was for about seventy... Yes, yes, it's part of the deal. So when they got in there and started digging it up, that's when they discovered that it was more expensive. If you'll recall, Mr. McCurry brought up that it could increase based on the surface and the proposal. That was the estimate. These funds are paid out of the sanitation fund, or what the city sanitation fund is, which is funded through waste management, commercial franchise fees. So this is not taxpayer dollars in the sense that it's resident taxpayer dollars. It is money that was set aside to help with the waste trucks that kind of bombarded the city along Beltline. But there was some significant panel damage that was underneath the surface that they couldn't see with the initial estimate. So yes, there was seventy-nine thousand that council approved, and this is the difference.
The first one was seventy-six, nine fifteen.
Thank you, thank you.
It was a change.
Yes, and that is included in the package. So the total, so the first one was the seventy-six thousand nine hundred and fifteen, the additional amount, plus that totaled to two seventy-four twenty-three.
So this is in addition to the seventy?
So, yes, so the one ninety-three, five oh eight, ninety is in addition to the seventy-six, which brings the total to two seventy-four twenty-three ninety.
Yeah, I called to discuss this with our city administrator, and you were in the room, I guess, or something when you questioned, because I was questioning this, that this is extra. It's, you know, when you do construction, normally you say like a ten percent overage or whatever. We're looking at thirty-two percent overage. But the problem is, is work's already been done.
Right.
And so there's, you know, how do you deny a payment for work that's already been done? We've got, Beltline has been approved, it's good. I just wish this had come before the council.
Shut up.
Before. You know, I do understand that it's not city tax dollars being used, that it's coming from a fee, a franchise fee. However, but now that almost wipes that franchise fee completely out, no?
It doesn't. It continues to replenish itself as we continue to get commercial business in town. So by the time that, at the end of this fiscal year, you will see that replenish itself for the following year because we collect it from all the businesses in town. So that's accumulated over four years.
Four years, excuse me.
You started collecting it in 2021. This would be the first time that we've spent...
Well, as I shared with you, and I'm glad this will go on the record, Beltline is mainly for traffic that comes through our town, and we've got a good road. But it's time we start working on the roads for the people in the town that improve some of the roads that they are living on. As I shared with you, we've got two roads particularly Cottonwood and Dewberry that are in tremendous bad shape. And so, you know, as this fund replenishes, I would like for us to concentrate on city roads where residents live. Traffic coming through our city are going to be great now. Let's work for our people.
Yes, ma'am, just so you're aware, we already, I already know about Dewberry, and we have already got something in the works for that.
I have a question.
Please, you speak, Dan.
Been done about Miller's Ferry, up there just past Pleasant Run? Where you can't even drive in the ditch now, or the last... I don't even go that way now. I don't want to tear my car up.
Yes, ma'am, a lot has been done since there, probably since the last time you've been out there. There's a lot of potholes that have been filled in.
I didn't hear that.
Yes, ma'am, there's a lot that's been done, a lot of potholes and...
Up that way?
Yes, ma'am.
It's been repaired. If you drop through down, you'll see. Yes, it's been repaired.
The last time I was this way, this is ridiculous. You'd be a city road in that shade.
If I can put my two cents in, Mayor, please.
Please.
Miller's Ferry from Pleasant Run to Hutchins is, it's used quite a bit. But on the other hand, Miller's Ferry has deteriorated to just basically a cattle trail. And you still have an option to go to 45 to go north and south. The price tag for Miller's Ferry from Pleasant Run to our city limits, which is probably going to have to be rebuilt, is going to be some that we're going to have to plan for, and it's just not, it's just not a quick fix. So I suggest that when we get into some of our leadership brainstorming sessions, that we figure out a way to perhaps maybe, A, know what the traffic really is needed, what, how much traffic is on that road so we can determine how much money we can spend for that section of free, for that section of Miller's Ferry, because it's going to be substantial.
Yes, ma'am.
It's in the millions of dollars. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. Will you mind, Dan?
Beltline didn't get that way overnight. And so now that we do have it repaired and thankfully so, it's really, really nice, and we appreciate all the hard work that it took to get it repaired. But are you working with the police department to keep the trucks out of our town?
Yes, ma'am, actually, I just, that's what I noticed when I come over here. I seen one of the officers pulling an eighteen-wheeler over, and I don't know if you've seen me. I was just like, yeah! But, I mean, I guess, not really, I don't need to celebrate, but, you know. But yes, ma'am, we've been working with Chief Kemp and stuff, and they've been, you know, it's like more and more, I personally see more and more eighteen-wheeler pull over. It's coming down Beltline.
Right.
So...
I know that that has been a habitual problem, and I think that it has been curtailed a little, but we just need to make sure that the no-truck route is observed.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that would help preserve our street.
I agree, yes, ma'am.
I have one more thing on Miller's Ferry. If the road, that section of the road, it's not that big of a section, but you can't drive that section. So you're either going to have to go on the highway, all the way around. There's no cutting across, or you don't know what you're going to go through. We bought all this expensive and never set a thing right equipment to do that stuff with. But it's just pretty much for your department.
I'm trying to figure out, I mean, the equipment we bought is a compactor for the front of the Skid Steer so we could pack the asphalt. But the road is, you know, like I was saying, it's in real bad...
It's in bad condition.
Right now, like I said, we went through, we potholed all the potholes. You know, there's also projects coming up that will, if we spend the money, take part of that roadway and correct it, fix it, that may help us. We're not having to put the bill of the entire roadway.
Have we tried checking into a grant or anything, you know, trying to get someone to... Or Dallas County come in and help? Are the cost, or...
So last time I talked to Dallas County about roadways, mainly we use them for striping, but they tell me it's anywhere from four to six years out, give or take, for roadway projects, just because they help all cities in the Dallas, you know, Dallas County area. So it's just, you know, if they're already on the list before we get on it, which, you know, who comes first, you know, first come, first served.
We do get discount prices from them, though, right, for the asphalt?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's all I have, other than I was caught in traffic when the truck caught on fire on the highway.
Yes, ma'am.
Hour and a half. Couldn't, I couldn't go this way because, you know, what do you do?
Yes, ma'am.
Sit there, hour and a half.
We talked to Chief Gifford about that already. He's got it under control.
Oh, well, okay.
Okay, if there's no more questions...
That's all I've got.
Council, may I get a motion?
Move to approve, Mayor.
I second it.
Thank you, vote. Please cast your vote verbally.
Yes.
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 It is five to zero. It passes.
Thank you.
Discuss and consider the approval of the October 1st, 2024, through January 31st, 2025, monthly financials.
Ms. Rana.
Mayor, Member Pro Tem, Members of Council, our finance director, Debbie Molly, is going to pass out the financials for this evening. And yes, council members, while we will request that this item be tabled until the council has had adequate... Yes, ma'am. And so we will place this on the next available agenda with a work session to walk through each month, and...
And it's still two months behind?
No, it's, this is up today.
It's through January.
It's through January, our cutoff date for January.
This says October through September, so...
Yes, so the software within QuickBooks, which is limited for us, has, we have to pull in the data through the fiscal year in order to pull the entire budget on there. But we are hoping to give a full report to talk through some of the challenges that we're having, what the schedule is to implement the fund software, and then give an update on the audits, and then what our cutoff is for each month. So for January, our cutoff was February the 10th, and we are looking at the 10th as the cutoff for every month, which still, because we're working on two audits, we have two staff people, it is very difficult to continue that work to make sure. So we are working feverishly to make sure that what we give you is correct and continue with the audit.
Will we ever get these like we had forty-something years here?
Yes, ma'am.
Monthly?
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of this three months, six months?
So even, even if we did it monthly, our next, for February, the cutoff is March the 10th. So with Debbie working to finalize the audit, March the 10th would not give her and the staff adequate time to get it to you by the second meeting in March. So the earliest that you could get it is the first meeting in April.
And we picked March the 10th. It's a very special day because it's also my birthday. So everybody will...
Oh, God. Michael, we're trying to take care of business. I need to get home.
And I can, I can say this. On the 23, 24 audit, we should have draft, I hope, in the next 10 days. Okay, that's the, and we're giving them the 23, 24 staff in a different way. There was a few things they wanted them differently, so we're in the process of giving that, and he still is optimistic. It won't be the end of March, and that's not going to be their fault. It's on our side. But we will, we should have the 23, 20, 22, 23 one, though, completed, and the 23, 24 one completed, hopefully by April. So it is still going in the right direction. And as far as on those, yes, you have, the front sheet is through the month. Only way to do what Ms. Suzie is saying, in order to give you an annual budget, the numbers have to go all the way through. If I cut the numbers off in March or February, then your budget cuts off. So that's why the front page has all the way through September for each fund. So you see all the way through, and then you have monthly in between, as far as a monthly summary sheet in between to show it, okay? To help, and we, I mean, if that's not workable, let me know, but that's, that's the only way we could come up with it at this point.
And when do we think we will ever move from QuickBooks?
I hope after we get this last audit and we get the numbers. That way, we'll have all good numbers. Then we have to redo the general ledger and move forward.
So when we end 22, 23, then we move forward?
Twenty-two, twenty-three audit, yes, then this, yes. During this year, we should be moving forward on new software, okay? It'll take, it will take every bit of six months before we probably get preliminary and a year before it's actually working. But we have to start, but we need to get the numbers all good first because we're going to have to do some general ledger work in order for everyone to match up, because they're all a different fund, a different company in general, in QuickBooks, and the numbers aren't the same throughout. So we've got to make the numbers the same in order to make it work.
Thank you.
I have one more thing to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Like I said, the forty-three years I've been in, you know, not, well, not a lot of those I worked here, but there never was this problem. After the first of them, it might be the middle of, you know, the following month, but there was always a financial report, you know, that you could just, the council, it's something, they're supposed to look at this stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we get this, you know, that...
I agree. I'm not disagreeing. I'm not disagreeing.
You know, it's just confusing. And we have three people working in the financial department.
You have two people.
Just two?
You have two people working, and one person does payables and...
One more than most of them have, so they usually have one person in the office. The big, some of the bigger cities than Wilmer. So that's all I have. I'm not much with it at all.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
We will table this until our next meeting, and that will be March the 20th. Okay. At this time, we are adjourned, and it is eight fifty. Thank you, thank you, sir.